The Council Meeting of September 23rd, 2024. Members of the public are invited to attend in-person meetings in council chambers. Public access is also available by using the call-in numbers posted on the meeting agenda, and tonight's meeting will be broadcast on the city's YouTube channel online. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Leidy, here.
Mayor Protem Lukman-Hiramasa, here.
Councilmember Burns, here.
Councilmember Hadamio, here.
Councilmember Kondo, here.
Councilmember Roper, here.
Councilmember Goff, here.
Councilmember Nowiki, here.
Councilmember Walker, here.
Thank you.
Our flag is in a new location. Please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. City Manager Guyer, are there any responses to resident inquiry?
None.
Okay.
Sorry, nothing this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda? Okay. We will move to public invited to be heard. This is an opportunity for public comment on any item not set for public hearing. Statements are limited to five minutes per speaker. Statements must be related to city business and limited to matters of community interest. City Clerk Small, is there anyone signed up to speak to council?
Yes, Madam Mayor, there are two individuals on the list. The first one is Tom Lampeau.
Please state your name and address and provide your comments to council.
All right. Thank you. All right, so it's good to be here. Good to be in front of North Glen again. I'm Tom Lampeau, 3951 Jackson Way. The building is beautiful. I'm really looking forward to October 12th where I can see more of it. It's an exciting time, not only for North Glen, but also for the communities that surround North Glen. It's something new, and with new, there's a lot of excitement. And a lot of times when we do enter into something new, we recommit ourselves to what we're doing, such as this new building, or December 31st to January 1st. So I'm here for two reasons tonight. The first is to remind you of what God is looking in or looking for you to do as we turn the pages and enter a new chapter in North Glen. So God wants you to stand and don't do as politicians do, but do them as a child of God in a political position. He wants you to be defined as children of God and do your job afterwards. And then the second reason I'm here is to pray, to pray for North Glen and the people in North Glen. So please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, in Jesus' name, we invite you here to North Glen to be with us and to guide us. North Glen is yours, and you are always welcome here. We come before you in humility, knowing you are God, and there are no powers greater than you. Isaiah 43:13 states, "I am God and always will be. No one is able to take anything out of my hand. I do something, and who can change it? Your ways are true and just. Help us to understand our humanity in your majesty and holiness. Father, are we living in times like no others throughout history? The uncertainty is great, and there are huge consequences. If we trust in what we see, we can get caught up in the chaos of the moment. Change our direction. Help us to focus and trust in your word." Hebrews 4:12 states, "For the word of God is alive and active, sharper than any double-edged sword. It penetrates even to dividing soul and spirit, joints and marrow. It judges the thoughts and attitudes of the heart. Help us find peace and strength in your word as we navigate our lives. Help us not become weary, but find hope in you. You will be our God, and we will be your people, in the precious name of Christ. Amen." It's a good beginning, peace and prosperity to North Glen. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
The second individual is Trisha Quint.
Hi. Come forward, state your name and address, and provide your comments to council.
Trisha Quint, 3098 East 110th Drive. I'm here to share my comments on the business and city banners that have recently been hung around the city on the light poles. I first noticed the signs in the entrance of my neighborhood in Fox Run. There are three of them within a few hundred feet of each other. The one that caught my eye was for a North Glen automotive business that my family had the displeasure of working with. This business now advertising in my neighborhood held my dad's vehicle hostage in their shop for nearly three months when the payment was already provided, performed work on the vehicle without my dad's permission, made threats to call the police because we were persistent in checking on the progress of the work, and were belligerent to us when we entered their shop. There are multiple cases just like ours. The same business has four other signs that I could count on Washington Street between 112th and Malle Drive. I thought that seemed like a whole lot of advertising in one small area. I drove around the city yesterday trying to see where else these banners were hanging. I found that there were many banners hung along 104th, just east of I-25, and west along 104th to Livingston. There may be more that I didn't spot around side roads as well. What struck me in this area is that one after another consecutively in a row were 14 signs for Ramos Law. I don't have any experience with this business, however, I find it very unappealing to see 14 of these signs hanging on our main street of North Glen. I am happy that we support local businesses, but is this the way we showcase them? There are a few other businesses sprinkled in various places around the city, roughly about eight others that I counted in total. So my questions about these business banners, is the business paying for this advertisement, or is the city? What is their cost? Is this banner advertisement commensurate to that of the North Glen Connection or other city-produced advertising? How long are these businesses able to take advantage of this advertising, and how long will their banners be displayed? Why are there signs at the entrance to my neighborhood? If I receive a flyer for one of those businesses, I can choose to look at it daily or throw it away. I have no choice with the banner. Are there other neighborhoods in North Glen that have this advertising in them? Are all North Glen businesses able to get these banners made for them? Is there a specific criteria that the business must meet, such as exceptional ratings or reviews? This brings me to my final question. Why are some of the businesses matched up with the signs that represent the Police Department values like competence and character? I was shocked to see the banner for the automotive business I mentioned earlier clearly displayed on Washington and Malle with the PD logo, the word "character," and a picture of volunteers. I'm one of them, but not their actual volunteers, but a stock photo. A person driving in our city could interpret that banner to mean that the Police Department endorses that business, or that particular business shows character, which I believe neither to be true. Perhaps our PD sign should advertise recruitment for our department. Why are we matching our Police Department values with a for-business profit, for-profit business? These two entities should never be together because that gives a false impression to the community. Other signs should say "shop" or "shop and dine." The business name, graphics, and messaging should match. I would prefer that the city spend money replacing or repairing the existing business signs, like the ones near the Glen and in the median at 104th and Melody. These signs are illegible in most cases, and some of the businesses are no longer located in those areas. If these business banners are going to be placed around the city, they should be identified with the "shop and dine" language, should not be in neighborhoods, should be paid for by the business only for a limited timeframe, and should not be plastered up and down the roads. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who did not have a chance to sign up that would
like to speak to council at this time? Is there anyone on the phone who would like to speak to council? You may press *6 to unmute at this time. Okay, we're going to move into proclamations. We have one tonight. We are just going to read it from the dais because we do not have anyone to accept this particular one. So the month of September is Attendance Awareness Month, and I'm going to read it. Whereas the month of September is recognized as Attendance Awareness Month across the nation to highlight the critical role attendance plays in student success and to encourage schools and communities to work together to reduce absenteeism. Whereas, the city of North Glen recognizes, excuse me, that regular school attendance is a key factor in ensuring students' well-being, academic success, achievement, graduation, and ultimately the future prosperity of our community. And whereas, chronic absenteeism, defined as missing 10% or more of the school year for any reason, is a leading cause of academic failure and dropout, affecting students' ability to reach their full potential. And whereas, reducing chronic absenteeism and promoting consistent attendance can help close the achievement gap, increase graduation rates, and ensure that all students have an opportunity to achieve their academic and personal goals. And whereas, improving attendance and engagement requires schools, families, elected leaders, and other community partners all working together to provide safe, engaging, and supportive learning environments for all students, and to address any barriers that may keep children from being in school. And whereas, North Glen is committed to raising awareness about the importance of school attendance and to supporting strategies and programs to promote regular attendance and prevent absenteeism. Now therefore I, Meredith Leidy, Mayor of the City of North Glen, do hereby proclaim September 2024 as Attendance Awareness Month in the city of North Glen, and encourage all residents, schools, businesses, and community partners to support efforts to promote regular school attendance, ensuring that every student in North Glen has an opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, socially, and emotionally. Dated at North Glen, Colorado, this 23rd day of September 2024. Now I do know that Councilmember Kondo brought forward a request for this proclamation, and I know the educators with me up here support it as well, but I wanted to offer Councilmember Kondo a moment to add on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, for this proclamation. I think it was a month and a half ago I attended the Adams County Absenteeism Symposium, Adams District 12, J-27, and others, talking about absenteeism. So that's where I first became aware that even Adams County is setting a proclamation for this month here in September for Attendance Awareness. And I think it's so important because, you know, when you think about missing two days of school per month, that could actually set you back substantially. And sadly, you know, a lot of young people are not prepared, quite honestly, for life, and you wonder if maybe standards that might have dropped during the pandemic might have contributed to that. And so to really put some focus on this and to cause residents to think about how important it is to get our children to school, I know the new rubric of hybrid work makes it harder because we're not in a normal routine where it's like, okay, take your kids to school at 8 o'clock, go to work. Sometimes there's days you're working from home, but it's so vital, and I appreciate the acknowledgement, Madam Mayor, on this important issue.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Did anyone else want to weigh in, say any additional comments? No? Thank you. Okay. Well, we're going to move into council communication, starting with Councilmember Burns.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to say thank you to everyone who came and spoke in front of us this evening, and we actually brought up the issue of those banners you're speaking about at our last meeting, and so we will be discussing those moving forward, so stay tuned. So CCPP met, they handed out these flyers. I don't know how to make have Brandon, can you zoom in on this? At the Pirate Fest, they're hosting a Halloween decoration competition in the wards. It's very cool, yeah. It's called the Graveyard Shift, and then the Graveyard Shift from the Police Department will also get their own vote of whose is the best lit up at night, looking super spooky. So check it out. There's a website, landing page on our website, so check it out. We had our first legislative committee meeting this evening. Mayor Protem will be reporting out on that, and it's exciting to have, excited to be in the new space.
Thank you. Councilmember Walker?
Thank you. Just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Tom Lampeau for his wonderful words as we start our first business meeting here in this beautiful new space. Thank you, Ms. Trish, for coming to speak. We hear you. And that is it, Madam Mayor. Excuse me, thank you for all the volunteers who helped work Pirate Fest this weekend. I thought it was a great success, so thank you.
Councilmember Hadamio?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just attended the Festival Latino, it was a second annual event at the Adams County Fairgrounds, and I think I had some competition with the Bronco Games, so the attendance was not quite 12,000 as it was in the first annual, but it was still an amazing success. So other than that, it's great to be in this space again, and I'm really looking forward to many more meetings. As I stated before, it's kind of funny how it was a packed house before, now it's like, feels really empty right now, so I'm looking forward to our grand opening, and there'll be more people here to celebrate the full grand opening, where everybody's able to explore our new beautiful city hall. Thank you.
Yeah, I started to wonder if we should have a rule that staff has to sit in the second row, because you're so far away back there. Councilmember Nowiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Hot mic. Yes, it's great to be in this space. Thank you, everyone who spoke. It's great to be here with all of you. Let's see, a couple things. I attended the NSO Board Meeting. They're in the process of just kind of putting together some events, so, you know, seniors that are interested, please connect with the North Glen Senior Organization, because they're always looking to kind of have more seniors and help seniors as well. I also had the opportunity to attend the Adams County Health Department's Second Annual Elected Officials Day Luncheon. There we discussed access to behavioral health services, food access, and ways to keep nicotine products away from youth. It was a good discussion and nice to connect with other elected officials in the county. The last thing, I just want to say with the Halloween decorations, I bet Ward 2 is going to win, because we're pretty awesome at doing Halloween decorations, so. And we've already started, I put mine up yesterday, so we like to start early and go big, so, yeah, looking forward to that. That's all.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a couple of things to report on. September 12th, Colorado Communities for Climate Action had their monthly, or I guess it's every other month, policy meeting. I just kind of planning for the coming year, because our planning year kind of goes around the legislative session, so we haven't quite started seriously on that yet. And then on September 20th in the morning, CC4CA had the Executive Committee Meeting. Again, similar things, except that this is the first time CC4CA is applying for federal money for a grant directly instead of working with cities or helping cities to write them. And this grant would allow them to hire a halftime person to help municipalities with their electrification plans and programs and grant-ready. So that was kind of an interesting new thing we're doing. And then also later on September 20th, I did do a volunteer shift at the Pirate Fest, checking IDs. It was very busy on Friday. There were lots of fun, lots of families, great costumes, and I did not, was not able to attend on Saturday. I think it was pretty good, even though the weather was kind of threatening. So any of you listening, if you haven't been to the Pirate Fest, you really need to do it. We had so, I had so many people come up, "I didn't even know you were doing this. This is so great." So come out and see our Pirate Festival. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kondo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sit here at the top of this daze, and I look out into this vast space, and I just have this flashback of the Batman Lego Movie. You know, he's in the Batcave, and there's this echo, and I'm like, I just feel like I'm in the Batcave. In any case, on to serious matters, three items. I made a new friend today. His name is Mr. Jamsey, Ward 4, and even though he is not Ward 3, I feel obligated to be able to take his call and listen to his concerns. And I think I'm very confident that any council member sitting here with me would do the same if it was somebody from my ward. I'm not going to thumbnail the entire long conversation, I will just tell you that there were nine issues that came to the fore, and if, Mr. Jamsey, if you're out there on Channel 8 tonight, I want you to know that I did the best I could to thumbnail those issues for Councilmembers Roper, and Mayor Protem, Shen, and Lukman-Hiramasa. But the point that I want to make here is, oftentimes I think our residents think that we have Superman or Batman powers, you know, the pixie dust or the magic wand, that we can fix things on the spot. But the truth of the matter is, and I did share this with Mr. Jamsey, is that none of us individually have power. Our power is actually the collective nine of us when we make policy decisions or we set budget. And I hope he understood that. And the reason why I'm saying this right now is for the public's benefit also, to understand that, you know, we, I acknowledge, and I think when we take calls, we acknowledge your pain. We also want to make sure that we work within the system so that, you know, you're reaching out to the appropriate department, so the people with the right knowledge can address your concern. And if you're not getting satisfaction, then that is the opportunity to escalate up through us, through the city manager, so that we can get you the right response, or at least make sure that your issue is being handled. So that's the one anecdotal story I'd like to share with you. Again, I really did enjoy speaking with this man. He's a retiree of the U.S. Postal Service, so obviously served in government and understands sometimes why government can be very slow and bureaucratic, but I did enjoy that conversation. Last Thursday, I did a ride along with Station 62, North Metro Fire. Did not know this, but Station 62 is the only station that has a ladder truck in North Metro Fire. And I'm probably going to get myself in trouble, but they did deploy the ladder, and I was able to climb all 150 feet. And just a reminder for the daze, there is an open invitation for any of you to do a ride along. I will tell you that for the eight hours that I sat there with Station 62, very interesting, we responded to a traffic accident, we responded to a faulty stuck elevator at the Reserve Apartments. And then, as before I took off, this family came up. Apparently, they had a strange cat in their house that was not their cat. Needless to say, we didn't go on that call, but it, what it did strike me is that, first and foremost, very professional people, and sometimes they have to go and troubleshoot things that they just don't know, it's not within their normal skill, i.e., trying to troubleshoot an elevator. Thank God, nobody was stuck inside, but I was really impressed by this group of people. And I hope that you all will be inspired to come and spend some time with the firefighters. I will tell you that they cooked a very good hamburger dinner. You know, you just can't beat it. I know the Police Department is going to hate me for it, because it's like, yeah, okay, fine, you know, rubbing it in, but firefighters are indeed good cooks. And then my last note is that we had a vacancy on the board. We had a resignation a couple weeks ago, and we followed procedure and appointed Jenny Murphy, who you know, our former Community Relations Director. She will be filling the empty spot on that board until May of next year, at which point then we will fill that through normal elections. The good news is that of the board of five, two of the board members, myself included, are North Glen residents. So I'm just putting right out there now that if you have a desire and inclination to wanting to serve on the board, and I'm speaking to you, you residents out there, it's a great opportunity, and should you have an interest, please let me know, and I can help you kind of get lined up for what you got to do to prepare to submit your name for the election this coming May. Actually, it will be late April, early May. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Roper?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Nothing to report at this time.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I actually do have, it sounds pretty loud, is it pretty loud?
Yes.
Okay. Maybe I can move a little bit further away, take my hearing aids out. All right, here we go. I have quite a few things. I will start with our Legislative Policy Committee, which we had today, as Councilmember Burns did report out. Sounds a little echoey, doesn't it? I'm sorry, I'm going to fidget with that thing for a little bit. So a couple of things that we discussed during our CML, sorry, our Legislative Committee Policy Meeting. We are looking at CML-initiated legislation to seek an amendment to the bill, I believe it's 221303, concerning mental health transitional facilities. As we know, the issues that we had were surrounding where these facilities can go if they are to house sex offenders, and we did pass that emergency ordinance that would, you know, increase the distance, and the state did honor that for a couple of years, but it is a temporary measure. And so we're seeking a more permanent solution, and hoping that CML will help us with that, specifically to add language that would require compliance with any restriction imposed by a local government on the establishment of permanent or temporary residents within a certain distance of specified locations by persons required to register their residence under the Colorado Sex Offender Registration Act, and then there's a whole bunch of numbers after that, CRS, et cetera, et cetera. And, you know, the key point with this potential amendment to the bill is, per Supreme Court ruling, it cannot have the effect of excluding sex offenders from living in any community, and so these, this amendment that we're seeking will, should comply with that, and we would focus on where children congregate. So that is the first update. The Legislative Policy Committee did take a support position on the Adams 12 ballot bond initiative and low levy initiative, and that will come forth in the form of a resolution our next official meeting on October 14th. So passing that along at that point, everyone is welcome to ask questions, but we did feel that it was important to support our educators in Adams 12, and all the feedback that we collectively as a council have heard from educators, having many educators here on city council, of course, is the importance to be able to support the, you know, the construction and rehabilitation of aging infrastructure through the bond initiative, and then for programming and more CTE programs and that type of expertise coming in through the low levy portion. That is the second thing that we discussed. And then we discussed Issue 1A. We were asked to take a position on this, which is Housing Affordability Temporary Tax Measure Request. The committee at this point took a no position on this, and the reason being is that this temporary issue, there was just a lot of information that we felt that we didn't have to make a good decision in terms of a support. This temporary initiative is from January of 2025 through December of 2044. Usually everybody's like, we can't hear you. Okay, these are pretty powerful microphones. Is that better? Okay, great. So where was I? So temporarily meaning ending in December of 2044, which is a very long time. There were no clear impacts on what it would be, impacts regarding directly to the city. We also have NURA, which is one of the tools that we have in our own toolbox for addressing housing. This would also increase sales tax for our residents by 0.15%. So that was another reason that we did not feel comfortable moving forward at this time. There was really no explanation of the benefit to the city of North Glen and no information on potential shareback, so that is the reason why we took a no position. Hopefully that is clear enough. Sorry if I'm blasting everybody's ears, a quiet one. And then the last one, it was quite a good, robust discussion today, was Bill 9, which I was not very familiar with. Apparently, this was DORA renewing the Sunset Labor Board, but somehow there was some wording that got that got pushed into this legislation right before it passed that requires plumbers to be licensed to remove or install backflow devices. I'm not a plumber, so I'm just relaying information on how I understand it, which could cause some issues for the city in terms of trying to seek out plumbers licensed for this reason. Now, the Plumbing Board did issue an emergency rule that they won't enforce this specifically. It was sort of a compromise. I believe the Water and Agriculture Committee is an interim committee that will introduce something to fix this. They did introduce something to fix this, which is that they require a licensed plumber for inspecting and testing, I'm sorry, for installing and removing devices, plumbing issues, whatever, backflow devices, and then not licensed for inspecting and testing. Anyway, that's in a nutshell. I tried to explain it the best I can. It's a little complicated, but more to come on that because it does affect the city of North Glenn and how we inspect the backflow devices. So that was the main discussions that we had during the Legislative Committee. Now, for the other things in my communication, I will keep it brief, as brief as I can. I attended the Latina First Foundation luncheon, and it was such an honor for me to be there because I got a table for the North Glenn High School girls. They didn't have a table last year. So it was, there's about 800 women and girls that attend this luncheon. So it was an honor to be able to hang out with them for a little bit, and they're all planning on seeking college scholarships that this foundation provides. They provide a lot of money, and these girls who receive scholarships, they're doctors, they're policymakers, they're ready to rule the world. On September 17th, I went to the Adams County Board of Commissioners proclamation of the Hispanic Heritage Month. Myself and Councilmember Hadamiyo were invited to attend this. And after the proclamation, they did something very unexpected, which was recognize the inaugural committee members for the Festival Latino, as Councilmember Hadamiyo just reported out. And they did give out these beautiful little plaques, but I didn't bring this just for myself. This is actually for Councilmember Hadamiyo because he had such an important part on the board and on the committee, and I felt that it was important to make sure that he received this. So.
Thank you.
And I also attended the Adams County Health Department, which Councilmember Nowiki reported on. We had a new meeting, approved a BIG grant for the Kids Empire at the Marketplace for $5,877. And then the very last thing I did this week was attend the North Glenn High School Prototype Display for the Business Appreciation Event coming up and help select, in the selection process of that. And then I got to interview the young entrepreneurs who are also receiving awards at the appreciation event. And that is all. Very long legislative report. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
That's fantastic. No, that's great. And I think we need to do something to help Mayor Protem's microphone.
Is it, it's echoey, right?
It's, yeah, I don't know. I know they're working on it. Yeah, okay. Great, I have just a few things. Couple things that are coming up. I was in the area on Saturday. I went to the volleyball tournament that was being held at the Rec Center at the same time as Pirate Fest. It made for some wild driving, but it was such a fun gathering of athletes. Like, there was just a lot of joy, and I was happy to, happy to be there with the Rec staff. They did a lovely job managing all of that. The, this coming Saturday, I get to be part of the Legacy High School Band Festival. This is multiple years running now, and it's one of my sincere pleasures to celebrate all of our marching bands in the region. It's quite a big band festival, and I get to be part of the trophy ceremony, and I just love it so much as a, as a former marching band musician. So it's really fun. And Metro Mayor's Caucus is Wednesday. We've got a lot of exciting work that we're doing there. A shout out early for Safe Street Halloween. That's one of our biggest community events. It'll be on Saturday, October 19th. You want to put it on your calendar, you want to make sure that you come. But in the meantime, between now and then, we're taking candy donations, and that, there's hundreds, possibly 1,000 people come through. It's one of our biggest community events, and so we really need more candy. So if you want to drop candy off at City Hall, or the Rec Center, or the Justice Center, it's a really big event. Before that, though, Prost is hosting an Oktoberfest. They're doing multiple in their other locations, but the North Glenn one, as their sort of, you know, main headquarters, they're going to be hosting their Oktoberfest on the Fourth, Fifth, and Sixth. It's the first time we've had an event like that in our city, and it's going to be really fun. And on the Sixth, that 80s band is playing at Four, so just a little heads up, one of the best bands around. And then finally, to the resident, thank you for coming forward. I share all of your concerns, as Councilmember Burns mentioned. It will be discussed. It'll be discussed at our study session on October 7th, which is still a public meeting. But it's really, every point that you made, I was writing down like, yes, yes, I completely agree. And I think one of my biggest concerns was the connection between our police department banners and the business. There was a disconnect there for me as well, and I just appreciate you coming forward. Not all residents do. I have received two text messages asking, hey, where'd those come from? What's up with that? And a couple emails asking, but I love it when residents come and visit us and share their thoughts. So thank you for that. All right, moving into City Clerk Small. Do you have any updates?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do not have any updates tonight.
Okay, City Manager Guyer?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for bearing with us as we work through the audio difficulties. These system, this system is superpowered, so I'm backing away just to demonstrate. You probably need to move the microphone farther away from you. We're so used to having to lean in. They've done what they can in the back to lower the volume, and we'll have the vendor come in and try to balance things out. So bear with us tonight. Three updates for council. The first is Sarah Borgers, our Public Works Director, sent out an email regarding the Livingston Traffic Calming Discussion that we had had with council a few weeks ago. And the next step was for staff to do a speed study, which was done. And the speed study showed that the road did not qualify to put speed humps back down on the road. We're going to have staff retest in October outside of any sort of fall break or anything like that. The staff had done the speed study August 20th through the 23rd, as her email indicated. And so staff spending communication with Wayne, the resident who took the lead on organizing the communication with council and attending the council meeting. So once that second speed study is done, staff will organize a meeting with the residents and have conversation about what improvements to make moving forward. So I wanted to elevate that. Not only did council receive that communication, but to make sure the residents who are watching have that information as well. The second piece is to let council know that there was a staff messed up in terms of the demonstration garden being created at Fox Run at the Central Park location. I've requested a city manager to have that demonstration garden removed, and it will be relocated. The conversation and discussion about where it will be relocated at will come to council on October 7th, and staff will provide options for council to weigh in on at that time. So that'll get added to the tentative future agendas tomorrow, and you'll see that reflected when I send an email on Thursday. The third and last update that I have for council is we have received complaints about the condition of the Wagon Road Park and Ride Greenbelt area. It has become worse in terms of the amount of litter and trash in that area. And so a couple of weeks ago, I reached out to Deborah Johnson's office, and her staff member, John, has been very responsive, as well as having their security team weigh in on having increased patrol out there, as well as going out there and picking up, cleaning up that area. So I did want council to know that I'm in communication with RTD. It's an area that has kind of ebbed and flowed, similar to the CDOT right-of-way areas that we've seen be affected. And so, and we have seen an increase in loitering in that Greenbelt area, and we will stay on top of that. And those are all the updates I have this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Hoffman?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. The only thing I have to report is I did spend Friday and Saturday of last week at the annual seminar on municipal law put on by the Colorado Municipal League. Always both interesting and terrifying to learn, to see, learn all the things that are happening. But if nothing else, I always come away from that conference very thankful that I am the North Glenn City Attorney, because compared to a lot of other places, I'm happy and proud to be North Glenn City Attorney.
We are happy you are with us. I do have a wondering about the microphone situation because I think we're getting feedback when others speak. So the microphone also has a speaker? And I wonder if you can turn off the sound? I'm just wondering. There's something happening that didn't happen before, so I don't know. We'll figure it out. It's going to be. Okay. I'm just wondering about that. So, yeah, when I turn mine off, I can hear people better. So we may just have to get in the habit of really being mindful of it. All right, thank you so much. Maybe not, who knows? All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Please open the vote. Please vote. It's the first time I've seen those screens. They're so pretty. You're really going to get to see our vote? Please vote.
I will close that vote, and the consent agenda passes unanimously.
Yeah, the feedback is rough. We're finding it everywhere, but we'll figure it out. While we're working on tweaks, we may want to look at lighting. Okay, moving into resolutions. We have a handful tonight. We're going to start with CR 144. Will the clerk please read the title? All right, our Director of Public Works, Sarah Borgers, is here to provide a summary. Welcome.
I think I need to turn that on. All right. So before you, as the city clerk mentioned, this is CR 144, which is an IGA between the cities of Thornton and North Glenn. There are currently 14 intersections that North Glenn and Thornton share. This will create a 15th intersection. Thornton is putting in a new intersection on 104th at Washington Center. So this would add that 15th intersection to the IGA. Thornton is constructing it. We will be responsible for operating and maintaining it. And the reason for that is we maintain most of the intersections through 104th so that we get consistency through that entire section. So, yeah, I'm happy to answer questions if there are any.
I'm looking. Does everyone need a minute to find the raise hand feature? Councilmember condo, do you have a question? No? Okay, just checking. Okay, thank you so much. Please open the vote. Please vote. Moving to CR 147. Will the clerk please read the title? Director of Parks, Recreation, and Culture, Amanda Peterson, will provide a summary of this item. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, mayor and council. So this resolution would set the 2025 user fees for the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Culture. Per the municipal code, we bring forward a proposed user fee schedule to you each year in September. And those fees are as recommended by the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, who have had an opportunity to look at them over the last several months and provide feedback. The proposed fees that you have in front of you today are in alignment with our user fee policy, which is also reviewed by the board on an annual basis and updated as needed. And consideration is given to the cost to provide the service, so what it costs us in terms of staff time, supplies, space, fees charged by other nearby municipalities, as well as the beneficiary of service. So how much of a public versus private service each of those fees are supporting. The fee increases that you see this year feel like are in line with what we're seeing in our surrounding communities. We may see some additional increases as we try to narrow that gap that we talked about during those budget presentations over the last few weeks. Really looking at the proposed or anticipated revenues when we first started planning the facility in 2017 to what we're seeing today. So you will see some increases in some of our drop-in program areas, our facility rentals, as well as some of our individual program areas that are listed there in the memo. Changes for this year, as well as any changes that you have already approved over the last two years, are highlighted in yellow in your packet. So that really helps you to track where we've seen changes year over year for each individual fee. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about the 2025 proposed user fee schedule.
Thank you. Councilmember Goff?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to ask for some more information about the senior class. And I understand, you know, that everybody's went up, and there's still, you know, less than a full adult one. But I did want to just see if you could say.
I don't know if I can, this will be better or not, but if you could say a little bit more about the effects of the Silver Sneakers Program and also just the, maybe the number of classes that we offer seniors to explain why the price needs to go up, because I know there's going to be some seniors who are unhappy with that.
Absolutely. So the fee that you see, increase you see for a resident of North Glenn who is a senior is an increase of 75 cents for a single drop-in visit. Our Silver Sneakers members, which Justin's behind me, he may be able to help me with an exact proportion, but the vast majority of our senior participants are actually attending the facility at no charge to themselves, though it is covered under, as a benefit of their insurance essentially, where we are reimbursed for their visit through an agreement with, it is not Healthways anymore. Healthways is the former contractor, but the contractor that implements that Silver Sneakers Program.
And then, like proportion, I'm sorry. Proportion wise, are there like maybe more classes for seniors than other kinds of classes? Or how does that, how does that work out?
I don't know that I would say more than for others, but we do, for other age groups, but we do have classes that are specifically for our senior participants. When the Silver Sneakers Program was first developed, there were very specific class requirements. And we've been a partner with that program really since very early onset. And so we have continued those senior-specific programs. We have staff who are trained to implement those programs and provide those classes throughout the week that are really geared towards our seniors. They're not limited to just our senior attendees. Others are welcome to attend, but definitely geared towards our Silver Sneakers participants. And Justin's behind me, he can certainly speak a little more to number of classes as it compares to our kind of general fitness class schedule.
Thank you, council. Justin Purdue, Recreation Manager. To expand upon.
To expand upon what Director Peterson stated about our senior-specific classes is we're really trying to shift the focus on age demographics and broadening those horizons and casting a broader net, not drawing those age lines per se, however, while still maintaining some of that same feel for the seniors. So we have a large number of dedicated fitness classes that target our seniors to include Aqua Fitness. The Silver Sneakers classes are certainly a big draw and very popular. They take place in two-thirds of our community room space and are really maxed out almost in that space. So we have roughly, you know, twelve classes of Silver Sneakers throughout the week. Aquafit is about the same, so you're looking at twenty-four classes and we offer just under fifty classes in the group fitness area. And so there's a lot of value there. And as Amanda alluded to, we have our Silver Sneakers membership, which is what is called in the industry a health reimbursement membership, and that is through Tivity Health. So United are really Medicare supplemental coverage is one that covers that. United Healthcare is another insurance provider that feeds into our, what's called our Renew Active or One Pass membership. And then we've recently added another, a third, membership option where members can receive a membership at no additional cost to them through our recreation-centered charges, and that is Silver and Fit or Active and Fit as it might be called as well.
Right, thank you. And I also do wanna point out for people that pickleball is not just for seniors. All ages play that, but I'm sure that's part of the programming as well. Thank you.
And just one other item to add on to that. We do also have our, and this applies across the board. We do have our scholarship program that provides for up to a fifty percent discount, up to two-hundred-and-fifty dollars per year per individual who's income-qualified. The income-qualified criteria that we utilize is the same as the school district uses for free and reduced lunch, so it's a hundred-and-eighty-five percent of poverty.
Councilmember Condo.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, thank you for responding to my email question. I appreciate that.
Yes.
This one, I don't mean to ambush you, but I figured it kind of floated into my head as we were having conversation. I knew that we talked about possibly having cross opportunities with Thornton, say for example, if you have a North Glenn gym membership or pass membership. Can you just kind of talk about whether that's still in its conceptual phase or any news app?
Very much conceptual. We've had some very early preliminary conversations at the staff and will continue to have, have those conversations and certainly bring something back forward to you if there's a proposal or a concept that seems like it would be beneficial to our community and our residents. We aren't at that point yet.
Thank you. And now I will sing karaoke. I'll give this over to Jay, who is our karaoke dancer. Thank you.
You change your mind? I don't, yeah. Okay. Okay, I see no more hands. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote and CR 147 passes unanimously.
CR 148. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution adopting a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board Fee Waiver Policy for the City of North Glenn, Colorado.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right. Our Director of Parks, Recreation and Culture, Amanda Peterson, is here again. Hello.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this resolution would provide for an update to our existing fee waiver policy, which was most recently updated or adopted in 2016. It is the responsibility of our Parks and Recreation Advisory Board to review fee waivers and approve those as appropriate in accordance with this policy that is the response, comes before council if any changes are made to it. The primary change that we're proposing tonight is actually to eliminate a language that does not allow for fee waivers to be provided to faith-based organizations. So it really modifies that language to allow for any organization that meets the remaining criteria to be eligible for a fee waiver without their affiliation with a faith-based organization being taken into consideration. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board did review the proposed policy and recommended it be brought forward to council for consideration. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great. Councilmember Nowicki?
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, and this is a question for the, the city attorney here. Can you talk a little bit about the recommendations and why the language was removed from the policy?
I can. There was a 2022 United States Supreme Court case that sort of changed the way in which we look at these issues and what was previously seen as an unlawful endorsement of religion is no longer. And so really, it's a matter of treating religious organizations no different, no better, no worse than other organizations that might be, might qualify, might meet the criteria for a waiver.
Thank you. And maybe this question is for you, Director Peterson. Is there any kind of particular religious group that may benefit more from this, from this more than others?
No, I don't believe so. Again, as City Attorney Hoffman said, it's really looking at every fee waiver that comes in through the other criteria that are listed on, in the policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Goff?
Thank you. So my question just was, just for clarification, we had the healing, well, it's not the healing powwow, it was people's powwow here this last summer. I mean, is it possible that something like that could be considered a religious organization?
Well, it was not previously because we have provided them with a fee waiver. And since that language would be struck from this revision, it wouldn't be a concern moving forward.
Okay, I guess I'm just trying to, with people, clarify in my own mind and for anyone else that, like, a religious organization doesn't have to be like a strict, narrow definition. It could be expanded to lots of groups that maybe you wouldn't initially think of as a religious organization. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Would that possibly be a question for the city attorney as far as like what defines a religious organization?
I frankly think it doesn't matter anymore because we're eliminating the waiver as opposed, if, it would be more significant if we, if we were saying that they were no longer subject to it and then that definition would be, would be more appropriate. Now they're on the same footing as any other type of organization, so frankly, the definition would probably not matter at all.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I don't see any more hands. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
I will close that vote and CR 148 passes unanimously.
CR 149. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution approving a professional services agreement between the City of North Glenn and Edge Contracting Incorporated for the Webster Lake Flume contract.
Move for approval.
Second.
All right, our Director of Public Works, Sarah Borgers, is here to provide a summary. Hello.
Awesome, thank you. So CR 149 approves a contract with Edge Contracting for replacing Webster Lake Flume. So a flume is just a structure that conveys water, in this case, out of the farmer's highline and puts it into Webster Lake. That was constructed back in the eighties and it's showing its age, needs to get replaced. This was competitively bid and Edge Contracting was the lowest responsible bidder. That, that amount was one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand nine-hundred-and-twenty dollars. This is higher than what we currently have in the budget for that, but we do have funding available within the Water Fund for this work. We're also asking for ten percent contingency for a total contract, or not contract amount, a total amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand seven-hundred-and-twelve. I'm happy to answer questions.
This one is very straightforward. Thank you. Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
We'll close that vote and CR 149 passes unanimously.
CR 150. Will the clerk please read the title?
A resolution approving the professional services agreement between the City of North Glenn and Clifton Larson LLP for financial services.
Move for approval.
Second.
Deputy City Manager Jason Loveland will provide a summary tonight. Hello.
Hello, Mayor. Members of Council, thank you for having me. This resolution would be approving a contract with Clifton Larson LLP for financial services audit. What is a financial services audit? The short version is they provide an independent review of our financial statements and give and express an opinion on whether or not they're fairly stated. So that's kind of the short version. This is kind of an annual process. We are bringing this forward to council tonight, although it falls under the city manager's spending authority as this is really a reflection of the community council, you know, contracts to oversee the financial reporting of the city. So that is why that's being brought forward, although it does not meet our normal criteria from a spending standpoint. There were four firms that submitted proposals, Clifton Larson Allen, BDO, Ida Bailey, and Singer Luwak. The committee was able to review and analyze the proposals and ultimately Clifton Larson was selected. Our prior auditor, RSM US, they had been with us for the last ten years, they did not bid or submit a proposal. So we are excited to have the opportunity to move forward with a, a new audit firm. So the total amount of this contract is for fifty-eight thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars. Forty-three thousand one-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars is the base audit, audit fee. And then we're including two single audits. We're providing the opportunity for two single audits to occur for seventy-five hundred dollars each. A single audit occurs when you receive federal funding over seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars in any period. The last couple of years, we've had two, two single audit programs that needed to be audited for ARPA funds and then our one-hundred-and-twentieth federal project that we did. So we're putting that into the, into the contract for now. We'll, we'll hope for federal funding, that we need to spend it, but if we don't receive that, the, the amount that we spend will actually be less than the, than the contract, contract amount. So staff recommends approval. Happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just so I have a little bit fuller picture here, the prior firm that we were using, was that a ten-year contract that just expired or what was the genesis for them not desiring or ending their services with the city?
Yeah, so their contract was set up similar to this with a one-year contract with the option to extend for four years. Four years ago, we went, or five years ago, we went back out to see kind of what was out there. They were, again, the desired firms that we went, we went with. We did, I did ask, you know, if there was a reason that they did not. They've had some staffing turnover in their organization and they felt like, you know, and ending, providing services to us was in their best interest, so. They, they had some staffing issues. The, the manager that had worked on this for the last several years, right at the end of our audit, he left the firm. And I think that they've just had some, some staffing shortages, if you will. So that's why they did not bid on our work.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see any further questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Please open the vote.
Vote is open.
Please vote.
We'll close that vote and CR 150 passes unanimously.
Thank you. We have three discussion items tonight. The first one is easements and rights of way. Director of Planning and Development, Brooks Faboda, is here to present this item to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I guess I get to use the clicker for the first time.
Oh, wow.
Did you see that reaction right there? That just sells it right there. Good evening again. So tonight, here, we're here to, to talk about easements and public right-of-way. And what I wanna just kind of caveat is that council requested this to be brought forward, more so, I think, for the purposes of educating the community and the public. So what I'll do is just sort of walk through each slide to help explain that for informational purposes. Please feel free to jump in anytime if you have any questions. So, let's see, where am I pointing to? I don't even know. Is it on? That's a good question. It says it's on, but... Here we go. Thanks, Jason. Okay. We're gonna define what an easement is and provide some examples, also what public rights of way are, some best practices for easements, and also what are typical utility companies that utilize our easements in the community. So what is an easement? Well, it's a use of land limited to the original owner and retains the right to the land. Easements can be used for utilities. We'll go into a little bit more detail. Allowing companies to run their lines through property, they're typically made in writing, stipulated in property deeds or title insurance. There's utility easements and drainage and water right easements. So utilities include everything from water, electricity, gas, telecommunications. Also, we have drainage and water right easements. This is usually for conveyance of stormwater through properties and we have those throughout the community. Also, we have temporary or what they call non-possessory right. These are typically construction easements. So for instance, on the one-hundred-and-twentieth project, we needed temporary easements to basically stage the roadway improvements on the adjacent properties. And so that just went with the life of the project and not necessarily something that rides with the land like the utility easements and drainage easements do. There's also different types of easements here. Private, private easements, which is between two property owners. A lot of times you'll see this between commercial properties for shared access or for common services that they may have. Access easement is something where you may have a parcel of land that is landlocked and so in order to develop that parcel, the property owner would need to secure an easement from an adjacent property owner in order to get access. And another example we have here is what we call a view preservation easement. Fairly straightforward. It's to protect view, view sheds of things. We don't have any of those in North Glenn, but a lot of times in mountain areas and/or areas with hillsides, that's something that can also be very prevalent. Rights of way. So we have sidewalks and public roads. These are the most common that we have. Examples of those are, you know, sidewalks and roads and typically for vehicle and pedestrian safety. Other infrastructure rights of way are typically include city-owned power lines or maintained power lines as well as other utilities such as sewage running underground through someone's land. Here's some examples of the public right-of-way and we have little colors on here that I'll talk about in a little, in a minute, but these all depict utilities that are actually identified in the public rights of way. Ownership and responsibility. So public rights of way are technically owned by the city or the municipality where they're situated. Adjacent proprietors often bear the obligation to maintain their safety. Now, that doesn't mean fixing potholes, but it does typically mean removing low-hanging branches, snow on the sidewalks, things of that nature. Also, proprietors may be respond, I just, sorry, I got ahead of myself on that particular slide. So really, public rights of way to ensure freedom of movement within urban areas and adjacent proprietors play a crucial role in maintaining their safety and accessibility. This is just an example of one of our plats in North Glenn that show depiction of right-of-ways that are recorded on the subdivision plat. And a lot of times what you'll see is if you ever purchase a parcel, you'll have a schedule in your title insurance and it will show, these documents will show up that, hey, there is a ten-foot utility easement on the back of my property or a five-foot utility easement. One of the things that this does note here is, let's see, the laser is working, but it doesn't show up on the screen. Interesting. So typically, when you have a utility easement, it usually straddles a property line and so half and half is, is usually split of that easement. It's typically a ten-foot easement and five-foot on, on property A and five-foot on property B. That's not always the case. Sometimes they can be up to ten to twenty, twenty feet depending upon what's out there. There we go. This is just another example of a separate easement that's recorded by a private document. Sometimes what you'll see is that... Sometimes what you'll see is that someone will need to record something after a subdivision is created. And so this is just an example of how that might look like. Utility companies also mark their infrastructure in the easements. And we'll talk a little bit more here in a minute about what that really means and looks like. Also, this helps to ensure that there's no damage to the existing utility lines. It also prevents damage to nearby communities and safeguards construction workers. So here's a few examples, again, of areas being demarcated that are on private and public property of utilities, which are all likely within utility easements. And here is a color code for, that we have hidden here that we also have little business cards that we can hand out to folks. Typically, if you are unsure of what's going on in your yard, or if you have utilities in your yard, you're going to do some work. Dial eight-one-one, they come out, it's a free service, and they'll identify the utilities that are identifiable. Sometimes they're not always identifiable, but ninety percent of the time they are. So pink is for survey, orange is for electric, yellow is for gas, and orange is for communication. That's also fiber optic cables, things like that, what we sometimes refer to as dry utilities. Potable water is city water, irrigation, which could be a slurry line or something like that. We don't really have much of that here in Northland. But also the sewer line is green. So when you see those colors, that's what's got, you got going on in, in your easement and on your property or in the right-of-way. All right, so best practices. Generally, easement should be kept free and clear of structures and expensive landscaping. That ensures access to the utility by the utility provider. Landscaping and home improvement shouldn't interfere with the company's access to the equipment. If it does, the utility company can remove the obstruction or destroy the obstruction. And there's no compensation from the utility provider to do that. Also, as I said earlier, you can call the utility provider or locator eight-one-one before, before they can dig into the easement. That one just jumped. Hang on. Whoa. Okay, sorry. Okay, so be aware of basic facts of utility, of easements and utility lines to avoid confusion. Also, know where they're located on your property. As I said earlier, title reports and abstract, title abstracts can help with that. Also, if folks are uncertain, they can always contact the planning department. We typically have at least the plat information. Separate recorded documents just requires a further search with the county records to see if there's something specific to that property that might be recorded and we can always help with that. The other thing that we also have, and because our setbacks are sometimes less restrictive than the actual utility easement, we a lot of times see property owners, especially on the perimeter of a development, will have a ten-foot utility easement, but we have a five-foot setback. So what we do is if someone's really adamant about not putting or putting something into the utility easement, we have them sign this document that they are aware that there is the potential that if you were to put a shed or something else that is subject to setback, that's within the utility easement that you are being made aware of and acknowledging that there is a possibility that a utility provider can come in and ask you to remove it or they could actually tear it down themselves. So we do that a lot. We have a lot of folks here in Northland that utilize this and they are fully aware. And that's typically tough sheds is what we run into for this. But we, we created this, this process about 12 years ago because we were having folks get upset when a utility provider came in to do maintenance on their infrastructure and their, their tough shed either got knocked over or moved around and they were like, why are they doing this? And so we put this in place to help educate folks and ensure that there's as much transparency as we can provide. All right, just a little bit more here about city infrastructure. We provide water and wastewater utilities. We also have water meters and water meter pits. The water, we, sorry, the water line from the wa, from the meter to the structure is owned by the property owner. And from the meter to the main is city-owned. And this is important because a lot of times when things go wrong with water lines, people ask the question, well, whose responsibility is it? So from the meter to the house is the owner and from the meter to the main is the city. And the reason why we talk about this is because a lot of times people don't understand that that water service line is not necessarily in an easement, but the meter and the, the, the line from the meter to the main is. So we typically recommend, don't mess with the me, the water meter because we will assess a fine. And here are some examples of meter pits that you can see where they show up in terms of people's property and the sidewalks. Should be kept, water meter pits and should be kept unobstructed. Avoid putting landscaping or placing rocks that will cover them. Our staff do go out and regularly check these from time to time. Also, if you have a request for water service shut-off, please call, contact our, our line, three oh three four five zero eight seven seven zero. And as I said before, tampering can result in a fine. These are a list of our common utility holders, Excel, CenturyLink, Comcast, and the city of Northland. Other notables are Suncor, the Wyco Pipeline. That is a oil transmission line that runs through the city primarily on the east side. And then also we have Thornton and Westminster Infrastructure that also runs through the city. In fact, one of Thornton's major transmission lines runs down Community Center Drive. So with that, I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Director Saboda. Actually, I have quite a few questions, but I'm going to just limit them here and then you can come back to me if others don't. So I wonder if you could just talk a little bit. What I noticed in the spring and summer is that I think Excel had a contractor come through and start pruning trees and things like that along people's backyards and whatnot. So I, I just wonder if you could just comment to that, what is the right of the utility companies to come in and do that? And what kind of pre-notification requirements are usually done or expected before contractor chapes through your backyard?
Sure. So as a general rule, the, the city does not hold with these utility easements any pre-notification requirements. However, as a general practice, Excel typically tries to do at least, I believe, forty-eight to seventy-two hours in advance. They'll do a door hanger that says, hey, we're going to be in your backyard. Sometimes they will actually coordinate with the property owner depending upon the type of equipment that they need to bring in. But that's a fairly common thing that does happen and it's, it's a regular situation, especially with overhead transmission lines.
And if I could add just briefly, an easement is a property right. And so Excel is going to have that, a property right to enjoy that easement. And so part of the enjoyment of that easement is also making sure they do what they need to do to either maintain the line, keep the line safe. But at the end of the day, because it's a property right, all the things that Brooke went through on the, on the presentation, it's their, it's their ability to enjoy their property right.
Okay, thank you, Attorney Hoffman. Now I'm just gonna do a elaboration on a theme. Again, in, in my neighborhood, what I witnessed is that Excel this summer, spring, I don't know if you've seen it, anybody else here on the days, but they were replacing some old utility poles. And so what they would do is they would basically dig a hole next to the old pole, put new pole in, move the utility lines. But yet the existing CenturyLink or Qualcomm or whatever internet lines on old pole, they would not move, which makes sense. I mean, that's not their, that's not their infrastructure. But when I spoke with the line foreman for Excel, they said, basically, you know, we'll let CenturyLink or, or other utilities know that, hey, this, you need to move your stuff and you need to move it in ninety days. And then after that, we wash our hands of the old pole. And whoever's the last man out on that old pole will be responsible for taking it out. So I, to, to kind of elaborate on your statement, Attorney Hoffman, it's like Excel is like kind of relinquishing their right to enjoy and maintain and take care of all that stuff to other utilities. How do you explain that?
Well, I-
And other citizens go and get some resolution if they're saying, well, gee, you know, this old pole now is about ready to fall over.
The property right's not the pole. The property right is the strip that the pole is located in. So the pole is a fixture within the easement, but the easement itself is the entire stretch. So Excel's way of managing its easement and how it manages its pole and pole attachments, it is still managing its property rights. And so that, keeping that pole in place, if others remain attached to it, is its policy mechanism for managing one structure within a long strip. And it can do so, it would have the right theoretically to put its facilities underground potentially within that strip if there was enough, enough room above ground. But in my view, I think of the easement as the property right, not the stuff that they install within the property right, which is their, what they do for their business necessity.
And, and to add to that, most of what you see on those, on those poles is the other utility providers get a license agreement through Excel for that. And so it's likely that what you described from the line foreman is, is that they have a license with these other providers that says, hey, we're giving you our notice that we are now utilizing a new infrastructure and you need to, you need to take care of your infrastructure if you wish to still, to still be part of that license agreement that we have in place with you.
Thank you for that. Actually, that explains a great deal. That if, if the right is actually the strip of land and not necessarily the accessories or the poles that they put on, I, I think that's important nuance. I, I need to kind of process that. But I, I would assume even for myself, if that was pretty complicated, residents probably have no idea. And so here's, here's my conundrum is that at some point or another, residents are going to look at an ugly, you know, old pole that's cut off at the stump and they're going to say, well, gee, you know, what, what are you going to do about that? You know, Mr. Councilmember. So I, I wonder if you all are starting to think about that or, or do we need to have dialogue with Excel or other utility providers so that we can point residents in the right direction if they want some resolution?
I can take a stab at that. We have a franchise with Excel Energy. So I think the simplest approach is if not only staff driving around the city, if a resident wants to reach out to us and say, this pole is sitting here. We have a local government rep through Excel, Nathan Steele. And so he would be our first point of contact to relay to him a concern complaint about anything Excel-related. He's our first point of contact. And so he's required to be responsive to us. And so I know that they have been going around updating poles as well as when they come through and do their, their norm, normal maintenance. So usually we have general awareness of when they're in the city, so forth. But at any time, a resident can reach out and say that this is an issue. If there's a pole that's leaning or looks like it's older damaged, you know, I've had that concern relayed to me before. And we have Excel go out and take a look at the pole to reassure that it's, the structural integrity is there. And, and so that's our, our ability to interact with Excel is through Nathan Steele, our local government manager.
And I completely agree with City Manager Guyer, but I'm going to make another distinction, just to get in the weeds a little bit. And that is our franchise agreement allows Excel to occupy public rights of way. Now, they are still responsive and will still work with us on concerns. But if we are talking about easements that are Excel easements that are not located in public rights of way, because they have their own private utility easements that are not located in city of Northland rights of way, again, that is their property right. And so we can work with them to try to beautify the city, make that property look better. But if it's not in the public right of way, technically, we do not have authority to dictate what Excel does with it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And should I use the other microphone too?
You're not feeding back right now.
I think it's all right. Okay. Well, thank you, Director Saboda. It's been very informative. I'm on page seventeen, easement best practices, and I'm just quoting the second bullet. Landscaping and home improvements shouldn't interfere with the utility company's access to their equipment. If it does, the utility company can remove the obstruction or destroy the obstruction. So would this be at the cost of the property owner or to the utility provider?
So the, the utility provider, if, let's just say you have a shed and you're blocking their way, they can tear it down.
What about a, say, a tree?
Yep.
Okay, what, would it go to the cost of that?
So the, the utility provider would cut the tree down and likely remove it from the property. But typically, if you have a tree that's in their way, they will cut it down.
And they'll ship it, they'll take it off? I don't got to take it to M and O?
Generally speaking, that's what they do, yeah.
I'm just saying that because I have, dealing with a situation like that.
And this has happened in the past in Northland when we have big windstorms. Sometimes what can happen is, is they will cut, they will come and cut stuff down and have to come back later because sometimes it'll fall into people's backyards depending upon what's going on. But they will not necessarily do that in that moment because they're trying to get the lines back up and running. And sometimes they have to be reminded that they've left things behind, so. But we work with them on that one, that does happen.
Okay, and recently I ran into a couple situations in Ward Two. One that was on one-hundred-and-twentieth and Irma, where they had utility lines hanging dangerously low where people could, I mean, you could reach up and smack it easily, but you know, you said you're six feet, six inches tall. I could probably jumped up and got it, so. And so I've reported that on the Northland Access app. What should, I mean, should our residents do the same or call Excel or?
So Excel also has on their website a report system. The one thing to note is that typically the line that is the live wire for Excel is the one on top.
Okay, yeah.
And that the other lower hanging stuff is generally cable, other non-electrical, like gonna juice you.
Yeah, okay.
Wires.
Okay.
But it's, it's important that if someone does see that, that they can also call Excel. Excel will send a crew out to us, to survey the situation and verify what I just said because it's not always the case. A lot of times what can happen is that your, your overhead service line from your, from your home to the, the power line can be weighed down by a branch or something and all of a sudden you might be able to touch that and that would not be a good idea. But that's why Excel has that. If you do do it on the CRM, it typically would get routed to Public Works and then we would reach out to Excel and notify them. I will tell you that sometimes Excel is not the most responsive to that. So if it feels like something's not happening, to follow up directly with staff and we can try to reach out to them. Because I can tell you, we, we have a, a system where we report streetlights that are out and sometimes it can takes weeks or months to get replaced and a lot of it just has to do with their staffing.
Great, yeah, that actually addressed another question that I had and I've been asking this question for a few years now. It's about lighting. Like I, I know you said they're not the most responsive. Is there any more talks of that? I mean, I know it's been an ongoing conversation. I hate to be like, you know, the squeaky wheel, but there is still a lack of lighting and not only in, let's say, Ward Two behind Safeway by Webster Lake. Another so, situations by the Northwest Open Space and along Huron Street where like the lighting is very subpar and, and it's, you know, and it leads to a lot of crimes because there's, it's dimly lit. Like I, I want to make sure like, you know, you know, we're talking about this, it's in a public space. I mean, can we really get the, the ball rolling and?
Sure. So a couple of things to distinguish with what you're talking about is that most of Excel's responsiveness issues are for streetlights, not for lights that are located between different property owners. For instance, I think with, with the property you're referring to, that lighting situation is between two, two separate properties that would not involve Excel Energy per se. But typically, if we're talking about a streetlight out on, say, Huron Street or say that we have a streetlight in a residential area, that's, that's not operable, Excel would be responsible for those types of situations. I will also tell you that Public Works, I believe, late last year, did a survey of all of the Excel streetlights and has a couple of different ideas behind what we might be able to do in that direction. But I think to your bigger question, we're talking about SEP Ted and other- But I think to your bigger question, we're talking about SEP TED and other types of issues that may be specific to individual properties and not necessarily part of an Excel conversation.
Okay, so you said that if it's in residential, it's not?
No, if it's on a residential street
Uh-huh.
or like on a major street, Excel would manage that. But like between two property owners, like two commercial properties, like a multifamily and a and a a shopping center or something, if there's like a lack of lighting in that area, while it may be a common area, it's not necessarily something that Excel would uh, be involved with.
Okay, um, all right, I'll uh, I uh, may have some emails with some of their leadership uh, from a previous Colorado Municipal League meeting and uh, I just really haven't heard much from them. And I I just want to, you know, I see the the issue. I just want to make sure we can.
We 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 put a lot of pressure on Excel on a regular basis when it comes to lights. Uh, I can tell you that.
Yeah, yeah.
If you could, Councilmember Harmio forward me those emails that you sent to Nathan Steele and I'll follow up and figure out what's going on. The additional piece I was going to add is that lighting study that um, Director Sabota mentioned. That is um, implementation recommend of recommendations is included in the strategic plan. And so um, that'll be coming forward twenty twenty-five and beyond.
Great. Well, thank you. And like I said, it's been very enlightening, unintended.
There you go. Well done.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, well, this is one of those that uh, one of those topics that is always really interesting, you know, to learn more about, how a city government functions and all the things that go into it. I had a question with regard to the trail system. So I live in Ward two. We have kind of the trail system. Um, are all the the is the trail, what the city owns, is that start where the uh, where a resident's backyard ends that extends to the trail system?
As a general rule of thumb, yes.
Okay, okay. Because one thing I've noticed is a lot of kind of overgrowth along the trail system. I mean, if a resident has an issue with particularly the vines and, you know, I'm probably guilty of this in my backyard as well, having those kind of creeper vines. I know they can kind of creep up. And does that present a an an issue like a hazard?
We'd have to, I'd have to look at specifically what you're talking about. I do know that we get complaints on vine on uh, adjacent to public rights aware trails. And so we try to figure out whether the origin is on private property or on public property. And we usually handle those on a case by case basis. So um, I know like the trail system that runs along I twenty-five between the Ped Bridge at at Marketplace down to Hundred and Fourth is always a an area in question because sometimes the fence prop, where the fence is, is not the edge of the property line. Um, and the reason why is because the way the slope is, it was just easier to put the fence further back. And so we have that question of who's who. Um, but we we have those fairly well marked out in parks. Um, Amanda, I think, left, and so she would be better apt to answer that one. But if there are specific areas, we will be happy to address them.
Okay. And Excel really, it sounds like Excel really only, they don't kind of do maintenance. They just kind of come out if there's potentially a problem.
So what I know from Excel and past and working with them for as many years as I have is what they do is they'll actually go out and do surveying of tree canopies to make sure that they're staying away from that top wire or that the that the trees themselves are in a condition that they're not going to tap in a windstorm. So they they do look at that. They're pretty proactive. They also use satellite imaging for that. Um, and then they have like a schedule of when they go out and do those type of uh, efforts. But it's really primarily focused on overhead transmission systems.
Okay. And the easement, with regard to the overhead, does the easement run along the line? Like, I don't know how to ask this. I know the space where the pole is is the easement, but does like it extend upward?
Yes, so it it's going to depend on the width. So typically, it is not only where the line is located, but enough width to actually maintain the line because they have the ability to operate and maintain. So in many cases, it's um, say thirty feet um, in width. And yes, it is a property right. So that property right is the same property right you own in your in your home, for example, on your property in terms of it's.
Public space.
Right. Subject to, you know, FAA regulations and where you can fly your drones, but yes, it goes up as well.
All right.
Yeah, and just to piggyback on that, like here's a demarcation of the yellow. Um, in this particular uh, plat, it's a five foot easement offset from the center property line. So it's a ten foot. And normally what you see, especially I I'm fairly familiar with this particular neighborhood, is that the pole literally runs right down the middle so that they have five feet on either side to be able to get in and do their thing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, so I was cogitating over what Corey Attorney Hoffman said earlier. Uh, so I have two more questions. One is, okay, so there's a difference between public easement and city easement. So the the five foot uh, strip that's behind everybody's backyard, is that considered a public easement or a city easement generally?
It's going to depend on the plat language, but typically it is a, it is going to be a utility corridor that is, and it's going to depend if it was dedicated to utilities or if it was dedicated to the city for purposes of utilities. So it's going to really depend on your plat language.
So everybody's got to look it up to really know. Okay. And then just going back to the previous discussion, the hypothetical where I talked about, you know, Excel basically putting a new pole, abandoning old pole. Um, because you got Quantum or or SCI or go T-Mobile with their Optic Fiber line. So um, again, it's perfectly fine for Excel to wash their hands of old pole and say, you got to live with it?
In a general sense, yes, it is their property right in that sense. Um, and and remember that the city in a in a general sense, I think, wants to encourage co-location because that will actually ultimately reduce the proliferation of utilities going through the city. This is probably an an unintended negative consequence of that co-location is that sometimes if you co-locate, the primary utility no longer needs the pole upon which you co-located. It's still within that corridor, but yes, they can leave it there.
Wow, that's pretty interesting. I'm just thinking maybe fifty, hundred years from now, you're going to have maybe three or four abandoned poles in your backyard. I'm not being sarcastic, but I I just, it's an interesting problem. I I think it requires some thinking and I I appreciate though the fact that you're explaining this because this had been on my mind all summer and spring when I was just kind of looking at all that. So thank you.
Great, thanks. And I feel very fortunate to get to do the first. Corey, probably not so much, but thank you.
I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, next, I was good. Now I'm not. Um, our next discussion item, municipal EV charger pricing proposal. I'll sit way back here.
It's far away from the mic. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so sorry. Sustainability Coordinator, uh, lovely to see you. Mara Owen will present to council. Hi.
Good evening, uh, Mayor, Council. Excited to be here tonight. Um, I'm here to present a proposal, a staff proposal, uh, to address kind of the growing demand for our EV charging stations and also to make sure there's a fair and sustainable approach to managing the resources that we have that are available to the public. Um, in recent months, the city has observed a lot of uh, just an increased use in some of our EV charging stations, which is awesome on one side. And then there's also just the natural um, EV charging hygiene that maybe needs to be reminded and kind of brought up as part of our ongoing maintenance of those. So we have had some concerns raised from both residents and from staff about prolonged idling by some EV users. And idling simply means that when you are connected to the charger, you are no longer actually charging. Your vehicle is full. I, you have all the gas in the tank, but you are still parked there, which means no one else can use that spot. So that is the the idling issue. Um, in response, staff has moved up a proposed plan, which was originally set for January, to add a idling fee. Um, we would then continue on with stage two in January of actually charging for the energy use. So currently, EV charging stations in the City of Northland are free. So you get that energy technically for free. It's not a a ton. So that's that's nice. It is much, much cheaper than gas. Um, however, it is currently free with the addition of new stations at City Hall um, and simply making sure that we're evening out um, how much we're charging and just making that uh, charge cover the actual energy used. We will be implementing that in January, or that is the proposal. Um, the changes really are aimed at promoting fair use for all the stations. So anyone who would like to be able to use them can use them um, and then help cover operational costs. There's no aim to uh, make money off of this, but there is an aim to hopefully help um, break even with some of the operational costs and what's being charged. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So for clarification?
Yes.
I was good the whole time. I'm just going to sit way over here. Um, you're talking about the stations that are on city property only?
Uh, so currently we have two, well, two existing uh, dual port stations. So one is at the recreational center, at Recreation Center, and one is at M and O. They are on city property and they are owned and operated by the city currently.
Okay.
We will have future EV stations at this exact location. So they'll be um, again, on city property and maintained owned by the city. Um, oh, those are all implemented through grants, but we continue the operations after that grant funding.
Okay. Because we do have the Tesla station, but that's.
Correct. Those are, yeah, individually owned, individually operated.
Got it. Okay.
And those do charge a fee.
Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you uh, for presenting. I I'm assuming that you want, you would like to receive council sort of feedback?
Absolutely.
Okay. So I'm just curious, I mean, what does Tesla do when you have somebody that's kind of already topped off and sitting around?
They fee.
What is their grace period?
Yeah, so they have a fee. Um, theirs is actually adjusted based on uh, demand. So it it kind of changes a little bit. Um, what I think is really interesting to note, so before ma- making this proposal, we actually asked our partners, uh, Partners in Energy, which is Excel Energy, um, to actually do a survey of all of Colorado and make sure that we were in line with both federal standards because there is a federal standard for charging for EV charging. Um, and making sure you're charging per kilowatt hour, not just a set fee if you use federal funds for any grant purposes or anything along those lines. And then making sure we're in line with regional charging uh, infrastructure. So if someone's over in Erie, are they being charged something they are very, very different than Boulder than here? And where do we land? Um, and so we were less uh, less concerned with being in line with some of the public like Tesla chargers, but more being in line with the public municipal chargers around us. So what we did not do is look into the Tesla charging infrastructure as much as what do other cities around us charge? Um, what were their idling fees? And this is very in line with those. We are actually almost an exact mirror of this of Erie. Um, if you look at their charging infrastructure and how they uh, do idling fees and actually charging for the energy. Does that answer that question?
Yes.
Okay.
Thinking, you know, if you think about the market and if if the idling charge fee is more generous than that of Tesla, then you may have people, once they get wind of that.
Hmm.
City facility.
I.
It's slower.
And currently, we don't charge at all. So and we have not since the initial construction and implementation of those chargers. So that that situation exists actually right now. What I think you'll find is a difference between the Tesla chargers and ours is that ours are level two chargers. So they do take a significant port like longer time to charge. Tesla is like a thirty minute charge because it is a DC fast. So it is a much um, bigger amount of energy in a shorter period of time. So they almost have to charge for that because it costs so much money to be able to provide that service. Um, and you are essentially uh, trading out your time for that amount of money. So we we would not be in the same playing field, like we wouldn't be in the same ballpark really with Tesla because we can't charge in a half an hour, no matter what we do.
Okay, understand. Thank you for that. And then I'm just thinking as a resident, you know, Excel has these smart meters now installed on our houses and charge a higher rate for energy use to say from nine until seven PM, nine AM to seven PM. So I'm I'm just wondering, by design, should we also have kind of a progressive energy charge sort of thing that floats with the higher rate that Excel is charging us during business hours or weekdays?
Uh, to answer that question, the city actually does not have a time of use pricing on the on the areas where we currently have EV chargers. So we have a set price that does not fluctuate unlike what's happening in the residential area. So what we're intending to do with this is to pass on that flat fee for charging with uh, three cents above to be able to help offset some of that like light operational charge. So instead of the twelve cents per kilowatt hour that we are being charged, which again is flat rate, it is not time of use. Um, we would be charging fifteen cents per kilowatt hour, again, mirroring what's in Erie. But we would not want to, um, the idea, based on a lot of our research, would not be to overly complicate the rate by having fluctuating um, pricing similar to that uh, time of use pricing because it isn't being passed on to us and it's a little diffi- more difficult for the public to understand.
Okay, see other hands up. I I did have a question on the very last paragraph about equity tracking, but I'll I'll yield the floor and allow others to ask questions.
Councilmember Nowiki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, thank you for being here. Um, I did have a question about kind of best practices, but I I mean, I guess I had more of a comment. It sounds like you did kind of address best practices, speaking specifically kind of other municipalities around us. Um, as far as feedback, I think this looks, you know, pretty good. I know it sounds like it was well thought out and you, you know, did due diligence. You know, and certainly any any kind of changes going forward. I'm sure you'll come back and read this on. But yeah, overall, I think it's a pretty thorough plan. So that's just kind of my two cents.
Thank you for that feedback. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Pass the microphone.
Um, hi, thanks for being here. Oh, and it's not on. Okay, great. Um, I just have a a clarification question. The maximum session fee that you're proposing of twenty dollars for twenty, per twenty-four hour consecutive period, is that in addition to any um, per minute charge after the grace period has ended? So let's say somebody's there, their vehicle's charged, um, and they still leave it there. And then that twenty-five cents per minute charge starts kicking in, correct?
Correct.
Um, and let's say they leave it overnight. So hypothetically, would they get a twenty dollar session fee charge? Sorry, I don't have an EV vehicle, so I'm just trying to figure out how that works. And then the um, twenty-five cents per minute surcharge?
So I'll 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 answer your question. So there's going to be two answers. One is going to be um, from, let's say, the we we initiate this uh, idling fee charge from October to January. There's going to be a slightly different answer for that versus starting in January, once we charge for energy. So the I'll answer the first one. Um, there were, the maximum charge you would have for an idling fee only would be twenty dollars. So essentially, once you had your car plugged in, so the idling fee only hits once you are full. So you could spend four hours on the charge as long as your charge, your car is actually charging, so taking gas essentially. Um, you do not get charged because we don't currently charge for the energy. The minute you stop, um, so you're no longer, we have a sixty minute um, grace period that says, hey, you're in a meeting. You get to go out, get out of the meeting and then go unplug your your car. We give you that grace period. After that, you have the actual fee that can go up to twenty dollars. So that's basically an hour and twenty minutes. It's it's if you actually do the math on how long it takes for you to get to that full twenty dollars for that day. Um, that's for twenty-four hours from the time that you started charging. So if the next day, that twenty-four hour period comes up again, you would be hit, it would start that um, twenty-five cents a minute. I think it was twenty. Um, that would essentially get to, if you could get a second twenty dollar total, you know, per twenty-four hour fee. Um, let's say you left it on for three days, you could get twenty dollars per day, really, if you kept going. Um, let's say you never moved your car, something along those lines. Once we hit January, you will have a session fee that will be based on how much energy you use. Again, our idling fee doesn't hit until after you're no longer taking energy. So let's say I pay two dollars for my total energy for that day. That's my two dollar energy. The fee is separate. So the fee would be twenty dollars on top of that two dollars that I spent for the energy because the energy is just your your, you paid for the gas you used. Um, the twenty dollars is simply saying the fee for you not moving your car is set at twenty max. Does that answer the question?
That that does. Um, but that also means that somebody could be there twenty-four hours and still not pay more than twenty dollars, correct?
Correct. The idea is to start here to be more in line with our regional partners. If we real, the whole goal is to essentially encourage good charging practices. If we're seeing that this charge does not actually increase that um, that good charging practice, we can adjust it. But we'd like to start somewhere that we think is a little more equitable and then adjust if people aren't responding in a positive manner. Positive for everyone.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilmember Goff?
Okay, I'm going to move back here and see if it works. Okay, um, first, thanks for this. Um, I'm really uh, appreciating the fact that you, the staff is bringing this forward ahead of time. I think the plan that's laid out now will help, as you were, I think you said, ease people. I think the plan that's laid out now will help, as you were, I think you said, ease people into realizing that this isn't just for them and they don't get to have it free forever. We have to share. And so, I'm all for this, so thank you.
Thank you for the feedback.
I was thinking about the, so our total number of chargers after the ones are installed here is what, six?
Yes, because we have some at JC Park as well. So JC Park Maintenance and Operations and the Recreation Center.
So it'll be eight?
So there's a difference. The stations themselves are, we only have three, but each one of them has two ports. So there's technically eight ports, but, or, six ports, but only three stations.
But we'll have eight ports when these go in?
Correct.
Okay. Thinking about Civic Center Master Plan and, and this building and our commitment to this, is there a plan to support our residents in other ways? So, for example, I have a suspicion that we have residents in our neighboring apartment complex that are using these, not necessarily city staff members. It might be a combo.
Correct.
Is there any plan to support apartment complexes with installation in some way?
So, actually, that's one of the reasons when we went for grant funding, so all of these stations have been funded through grant funding, through Charge Ahead Colorado, which is the public grant funding through the Colorado Energy Office. And actually, one of their criteria is locating next to multifamily, where we know that residents don't have access to a charger at home. And so that's one of the reasons that those locations were chosen, that they were funded. So it actually was one of the intended models for public chargers to be able to be used by multifamily homes, because if we're asking, if we're looking for encouraging people to switch over to EVs, which is one of our EV Action Plan goals, this is one of those ways of helping to address maybe the employees and maybe future fleet being able to use those. We do intend to have separate fleet chargers, so that we aren't trying to have residents be competing for city vehicles with us based on a charger. So that would be the alleviation of some of those maybe inherent conflicts that could happen right now, but will hopefully not happen in the future. But they are actually intended for everyone in the public and their location is actually related somewhat to their location with multifamily, so.
Do we have an estimate on how many city employees drive an EV vehicle that might wanna charge at work?
We did a survey, but it was two years, one year, two years ago. At this point, we do, yeah, go ahead. At least, yes. That, we did have an indication. So that was another reason why we had grant funding, is we said, not only are we going to, not only are all these stations located near multifamily, but we also have X amount of employees who intend to use it, which is why we're locating here. So that survey did show a, a strong interest in city employees, saying we would like to be able to use this, which is another reason we had grant funding that was actually funded. We do intend to do a, a survey like that in the future, but with the increase in the, both fleet charging at city facilities and with the additional public chargers here, we hope to, you know, encourage more city staff to switch over if they choose.
So did we have an amount when you did the survey? I missed that part.
We did, and I just don't wanna give you the wrong number. I don't know that. I can pull it off the top of my head.
Okay. What, why were they free to begin with?
So actually, one of the grant stipulations was to encourage free charging. So in order to actually encourage, we're really seeing a lot of people adopting at this point, but those stations have been installed for quite a bit of time and they weren't really heavily used for a long period of time. The grant funding really asked if you could, at any point, subsidize and essentially have them be available for free, that would be a really big indication of their funding, their propensity for funding that, that request, because the idea was to start off with people saying, hey, charging isn't that hard. Look, it's so easy. You have it really close to you and it's free. It's a lot easier to get people to adopt something new if it's a little less of a barrier. So that was one of the reasons that we went with that. They had asked, for the first five years, if you didn't charge, that would be their preference. So we are just now reaching, they did not say they wouldn't, you couldn't, but they had a strong preference. And that's how we intended to move forward. We are now moving into a higher number of EV charging stations, so it makes more sense for us to kind of weigh the charge that we are essentially giving to our residents versus the, the cost. So I think that's one of the reasons we're bringing this now, before we have quite a few more stations.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Two questions. So it sounds like on the front page of the memo here, you're actually gonna have some metrics to gather. So, my first question is, and obviously it's early days with the EPA grant, Dr. Cog, et cetera, et cetera. But do you foresee, looking in your crystal ball, that if we were to gather all this information, the number of hours charged, et cetera, cars and things of that nature, that might one day translate into some sort of carbon credit? Is that kind of, if we were to kind of look forward, five, 10 years into the future, is this kind of the direction where we're going here?
That's a great question. I don't know that I can, that my crystal ball goes out that far necessarily. I would love to see a, a time when some of the good deeds that people are doing, where there isn't really a, a return on investment right now, would have a return on investment in the future. I don't know, I know for certain that that is a conversation that is in its definitely infancy. I don't know where it will go necessarily, but it would be, I, I think, a really interesting question to kind of poke, now that we've been kind of looking at the, the eventual goal of, you know, back to your Dr. Cog CPRG funding question, like, is that something we could look into? That's an interesting question.
Okay, great. And then, my last question, very last paragraph, equity and access. If you can just kind of expand on that a little bit more.
Making sure I'm on the right page.
What kind of equity are we trying to assess?
Is it the last sentence of the memo?
Last, last paragraph.
Okay. Oh, page four, okay, got it. So one of the ideas around equity is we are trying to not only subsidize those who are doing, so EV, in our EV Action Plan, we said, we really wanna encourage people for many reasons to move into EV charging, but we don't wanna simply subsidize people who are on the EVs versus people who are on gas for, you know, making sure that there's an entire, there's some equity there. We also really wanna make sure, similar to Mayor Leidy's question on the multifamily homeowners who maybe not, you know, if you're in a condo and you don't actually have access to a garage or someplace to charge your vehicle, you don't have access to this. So making sure it's equitable on many different levels, I think, is one of our pieces. Being able to also make it somewhat less cost, less costly than gas. So anytime you're making any of these changes, we wanna see where is the cost of our, our electricity versus the cost of gas and making sure that we are not adding an additional burn into someone who's, maybe you got into an EV and you're really excited about, you know, the lower pricing, and then we wouldn't wanna change up anything later and have that be a, a really tough circumstance for someone. So I think it's making sure that we're tracking all three of those pieces moving forward. Yeah, go ahead.
Mark, could you also touch a little bit about the rate as it relates to, say, for-profit other locations that also charge for utility for this? Because I think part of our intention here was, is to have it at the the lower end of that spectrum, spectrum for, for, for it to be as equitable as possible. And that this was not necessarily a venture for us to make money from, but really just to try to cover our, our margins and minimum operating costs.
That's really, yeah, no, we, one of our biggest points, we, we only went up by three cents from our actual, you know, energy charge and we actually could charge a little bit more if we really wanted to cover our entire cost for operation and maintenance. And we are choosing not to do that, simply to make it more accessible to more people.
Doug, I appreciate that comment, because I wanted to understand exactly, when you talk about subsidizing or equity and that sort of thing, you know, clearly.
I think, the point I wanted to just sort of la, layer in there is, is that we are not charging commercial rate. We are charging a much lower rate in order to ensure that we are providing the access to the residents. Because when you think about multifamily populations, even if they have an EV with all the incentives out there, you can really get ready-made access. So you're talking about people who may be income-challenged, and so we're not necessarily charging 20, 30 cents a KW. We're trying to charge a lower rate, because we're, that's part of our, our thought process with this, with this pricing schedule.
We are significantly below market if we were trying to make money on that.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much for that feedback.
All right, number three, City Council Quarterly Agenda Planning.
I'm sorry, did we get consensus just to move forward with what we're proposing?
I think so.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. City Council Quarterly Agenda Planning, City Manager Heather Geier is presenting this item to council.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I moved this Quarterly Agenda Planning update up a meeting. Originally, it was scheduled for October 7th, but because that meeting has filled up with other items, I placed it on tonight's meeting. This is the purpose slide that I share every time we have this discussion. I'm not gonna read it to you, but the intent is really to foster collaboration and open communication with council to make sure the agenda setting that I do is on target with council priorities. We'll talk through the future agendas. We'll also talk about a potential cancellation and I'll ask council for feedback on that potential cancellation this evening. And then, as always, when we have this discussion, council members can provide me feedback and then council as a whole, if there's a desire to reprioritize any of the items. Already mentioned that piece. So in terms of upcoming meetings, we do have a couple of, one cancellation, which is known, which is November 11th, which is Veterans Day. So that meeting is noted on the tentative agendas that it's canceled. A question for council is for December 23rd. Would you like to cancel that meeting or have that meeting on December 23rd? It's the week of the Christmas holiday.
I'm good canceling it.
Okay, can you?
Yes.
It was a mismatch of, so hold your thumbs up high. I'm not seeing everybody weigh in, so I wanna, okay, perfect. That meeting will be noted as canceled. Right now, I don't have any meeting additions. As I've expressed in the past, I try to stay away from adding any fifth Mondays of the month as meeting additions and then minimizing any type of additional meetings, depending on what issues are out there. So the items to highlight, there are several, because we have a lot going on. There's a lot to talk about moving forward. So for the October 7th meeting, we do have the Marketplace SubArea Plan work that Brooke's going to bring forward to have council weigh in on. Additionally, I will present the next iteration of the Draft Strategic Plan for 2025 through 2029. Even based on the timing of this presentation, we've added the CGI banners to this October 7th meeting, as well as what I mentioned earlier, which is relocation of the Fox Run Demonstration Garden to this meeting as well. So that will be a full study session night. On October 14th, we'll have the 2025 Budget Public Hearing, which we're required to hold. And then, again, the notation of originally, we have the CGI banner scheduled for October 21st. I've moved that up to October 7th. We're gonna have several police department topics discussed at this meeting. Number of pets, which was a previous request by council to bring forward discussion about limits on pets and that sort of thing. And then, police officer health programs and then Ring Camera Grant Research. Those, all three of those topics were requests from council to bring forward. And so the police department, I believe Commander Rice is point on all three of those topics. On October 28th, we'll have the budget scheduled for adoption. So for the public's benefit, two additional touchpoints for 2025 proposed budget. The two discussion items include the Civic Campus Revisioning Exercise, as well as the Parks, Recreation and Culture Playbook. So both of those topics are opportunities for council to weigh in on. The revisioning exercise is really getting that process going. And then the playbook is sharing the draft plan with council to date and getting feedback and input. I think an important connection to make about the playbook is there was quite a bit of feedback through the strategic planning process with items that naturally, naturally connect, if you will, with the playbook. So there's a connection there that we wanna make sure that as Amanda and her staff continues to advance the recommendations in the playbook, that the strategic planning recommendations get wrapped in to that document and, and moved forward. On November 25th, we will have the annual recap that we committed to of the Safety Sensitive Zone Program information. So Deputy Chief Randy Darling will provide that debrief to the City Council. And I believe Deputy Chief, you're also gonna tie in some new technologies that were also a request of council in terms of the new speed trailer technologies that are out there. I believe Mayor Protem and Councilmember Condo had learned about that technology, so that's all wrapped into that piece there. The December 2nd council meeting will include the Civic Campus Development Scenario Exercise. So I believe this, this is intended to be hands-on for council. And then we're going to bring forward the permanent recommendations for the East 112 Flooding Damage Reduction and Mitigation Project. So we're a few months behind schedule on getting those recommendations in front of council. And so we will do a natural outreach to the residents of 112th and let them know that this meeting will, this little topic will be on this meeting agenda and we'll make sure that they have an opportunity to attend the meeting, to weigh in. As of now, we're not planning on doing a separate meeting with residents. It'll be one public meeting with council and certainly we'll share the packet information with residents in advance. On December 9th, I've gone ahead and plugged in my annual City Manager Performance Review. Typically, that's done in the summer months. I've had a lot going on with construction of the new City Hall and many other things. And so I set that aside and previously communicated that to council in one of the updates. The December 16th meeting includes the discussion that council has requested on the Evaluation of Special Events. Also connected to one of the multiple ideas in the Strategic Plan Document for potential expansion of special events in the city. We'll also have Personnel Handbook updates, bringing forward what those recommended updates are prior to council taking action on those updates at a future council meeting, which will be in January with the cancellation of the December 23rd meeting. And then, this evening will be an opportunity for council to debrief my performance review with me. Several items to be scheduled that have not been scheduled yet and likely will carry us into the first quarter of 2025 include the Washington Point Market Feasibility Report. Allison Modi, our Director of Economic Development, does have copy of that report. She is reviewing it. So if we can fit this into a meeting before year-end, that'll be a priority to do that piece. Brooke is planning on bringing forward amendments related to, and Corey, I can't forget Corey. Corey owns this piece as well, for the Transit Related Communities Bill. And then the Marketplace SubArea Plan. A second meeting is on the horizon that staff is tracking. And then, something that Jason and I have talked about with the proposed 2025 budget, along with the Strategic Plan being underway, is we want to have a conversation with council in Q1 of 2025 to really dive into all of the ideas in the Strategic Plan that are not currently funded and go through some type of prioritization exercise through feedback from council on what, what are the priorities. Certainly, council's gonna see how we've put ideas in certain years, so 2026, 27, 28, 29. There's very few things in 2029, which is okay for the Strategic Plan to be There's very few things in 2029, which is okay for the strategic plan to be at that point right now because in out-years, councils will be able to inform what work they want to see in those out-years of the strategic plan. But there's a lot, and so we're going to need to have some conversation and really make decisions about what's the highest priority, you know, maybe in tiers, high, mid, low, and then figure out what we want to tackle moving forward. And then going hand-in-hand with strategic plan. Again, there's a lot of connection here with strategic plan. We would like to have a code enforcement conversation. This is an issue that the mayor recently reached out to me about in terms of what is, what are the priorities for code enforcement staff? How are decisions made in terms of what's enforced, what's not enforced? What does that look like in terms of interaction with the CRM system, responding specifically to complaints either from neighboring residents or submitted by council members? So that's also a priority in Q1 is to have that code enforcement conversation. As we transition into 2025, I'll try to hit these targets in terms of bringing forward the next round of Quarterly Agenda Planning Review Dates. So I, I always build the year in, in advance and then try to stick to it. But certainly, if there's an agenda item that's a higher priority item, this item is shifted. And tonight, I'm looking for consensus for scheduling through December of this year. Happy to answer any questions about any of the items.
Great. Councilmember Condo?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If you can go back to Slide 7. I would be particularly interested on the 21st discussion of police officer health programs. At the SDA conference a couple of weeks ago, I learned that the state legislature just passed a bill to expand the scope of the firefighters cardiac cancer health trust program now to peace officers. I'll send you the link. And so I, I would look forward to having a conversation around that. What exactly is that? Are, are we eligible? Because what I understand is this is money from DOL to be able to help currently firefighters. And now with this new legislation signed by Colas, it looks like police officers now could be beneficiaries. Should be a big thing. So that, that would be my ask.
Thank you. Something that came to mind, and I, please forgive me if we've talked about this and my brain is shut off. When I looked at November 25th and we're discussing the Safety Sensitive Zones, do we have a placeholder or is it part of the strategic plan to revisit the No Need For Speed program?
That is a great question. I am looking at, let me just look at something real quick. I thought we had a separate traffic calming item under TBD. And we do not. Jason, do you recall? Okay, somehow it fell off a TBD, so we need to get it back.
Oh, thank you. I could have missed it. Where is it?
Oh, there it is. Okay, it's on November 4th. Thank you.
November, oh, sorry, I'm looking at these backwards. Traffic calming policy, that, okay. That is where that is. Okay.
So No Need For Speed would be a piece of that.
A part of that. Okay, great. And then, so where do you think in quarter one we'll be talking about the prioritization of the strategic plan?
I don't have a specific window of time. If you all want to provide me with feedback, if you'd like to have that conversation, January, February, we haven't penciled it in on a, on a date. So we, we can be flexible at this point and start building what that conversation looks like.
So really quickly, your last slide shows that we're meeting again to talk about the agendas kind of after January. Is it appropriate to discuss a possible retreat in January?
Absolutely.
If we don't talk again until the 13th of January, will have been planned by the time we meet again. So what are we, do we have any ideas for the first couple of weeks and just based on that? Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, it's, it's great that you're asking these questions. I don't know what the first couple of meetings look like in January. So we can, now's the time for me to hear this feedback and we can plan, we can schedule a retreat to have that prioritization conversation separate from a meeting and really work on what does that look like in vet dates with council.
Okay, does any, does anyone have any input? Like, I'm just looking, she's taken us through December 16th and then we meet again. Let me look at my calendar. Are we, are we meeting on the 30th or is that also a week? I mean, we, we have in the past taken two weeks. It's considered a fifth Monday.
I'm not planning on.
So the 23rd and the 30th, and then, so we would come back on January 6th prior to another agenda review. So I'm just wondering what we'd put there. Does staff have any thoughts?
Not at this point. I mean, it's very likely that as we get more into mid to late October, more items will come forward.
Okay.
And so there will be things unless we want to, that's a study session night, the 6th of January. The 20th would, that's going to be Martin Luther King Holiday, so that will be canceled. So that would leave January 13th and the 27th for regular meetings during January. So if council wanted to utilize January 6th study session as that, for that conversation about prioritization, we could look at teeing that up or we can schedule another time. But I, I'm also trying to be very sensitive that, about scheduling outside blocks of time because I know you all have so much going on and.
Well, since we haven't built the agenda through this next moment, I mean, that would be my recommendation. If we use a considerable amount, maybe that's the only agenda item on the 6th to prioritize that. That would tee us up for the agenda review on the 13th. How does council feel about that?
That sounds good.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, great. That's excellent feedback to have. Thank you.
And that is all I have. Is there anything else from council? Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
I am wondering if the strategy works to put the microphone straight up. That seems to be helping.
We will have links out. Bob is in communication with links and they came out today and helped with this microphone. So we're not sure of fixing this microphone through everything else off. So thank you for your patience. Sorry about the technology.
Yeah, I mean, it may work if we want to try it. I know we have more to do. Moving into public invited to be heard, opportunity for public comment. Statements are limited to three minutes per speaker. There's nobody with us, so I'm not going to keep going. While I have this thought, Joanna, how would I know if someone's on the phone?
It should show up under the participants list in Ring Central.
Okay, is that the only place? Because if I don't see them there, can I just skip that part? Okay, because it's pretty rare and I feel like I say it and we sit there and so I can see who's there. I just wasn't sure if there was another phone system. Okay. Great, moving on. We are going to, I will entertain a motion that the city hold executive sessions pursuant to Section 4.5D of the City of North Glen Home Rule Charter for legal consultation and advice regarding, one, the Justice Center Foundation, and two, the city's obligations relating to gender identity and gender expression.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? One thing I will say is that tonight, I'm recommending that we stay in place for the executive session because we have guests and there's too many of us and we'll just be smushed in that room. So we're going to stay here. Please open the vote. Please vote.
We will close that vote and the motion to convene an executive session passes to the analyst's vote.
Great. We will adjourn to the executive session.